Okay, call it to order. It is 6:35 PM, January 10th. Special meeting, the Franklin County Plan Commission meeting to order. Before we get into the meeting, I will turn things over to staff to discuss meeting format.
Tonight's meeting will be conducted through hybrid slash in-person slash online meeting platform. So if you wish to comment on clarification on public hearing items, please send us an email at frank county or planning inquiry at frank county law.gov. Before the public comment period closes, once public comment period closes on said item, comments will not be included for discussion. To those tenants, please remember to speak into the microphone and addressing staff for public comments slash testimonies.
Okay, great, thanks. Will blank staff please call roll call and announce whether or not we have a quorum?
Mike Crowless.
Mike Vincent.
Here.
Laiden Low.
Here.
Melinda Didier.
Peter Harpster.
Here.
Manny Gutierrez.
Here.
Stacy Niffton. Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The approval of the agenda, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the November 8th, 2022 meeting.
I'll second.
Alrighty, so...
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay, it is now time for the public hearing portion of our meeting. Good evening and welcome. I will turn things briefly over to our staff host who will go over the ground rules for tonight's hearing.
Here are the ground rules for tonight's hybrid hearing. In-person public testimony divided into groups for and against slash neutral. They'll be called upon to speak during the allotted in-person public testimony section. They're going to need for the audio record and position on proposal. Calling public testimony called upon individually during the call-in public testimony portion of the hearing, given their name for the audio record, as well as if they are in favor, neutral, or against proposal, please mute audio when not speaking. Email comments received during the public hearing be read into the record by staff after the call-in public testimony section of the hearing. All comments and questions shall be addressed to the Plan Commission and should be relevant to the application and not be of personal nature. Each speaker shall have five minutes to provide testimony and shall speak into the microphone. Please avoid repetitive comments. If there are a large number of speakers or part of a group or organization, please select a representative to speak on behalf of the group. Behaviors such as clapping, booing, kissing, or remarks is prohibited. Every citizen here tonight shall have the opportunity to testify without such distractions.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the public hearing ground rules? Seeing none, turning for a moment to our commission members, let us keep in mind that we are prohibited by law from communicating with members of the public on the subject matter of these hearings except... Oh, excuse me, on the subject matter of these hearings, except in these hearings. We also may not participate in a decision in which there is an appearance of conflict of interest to the average person. So let's take a minute to consider as to the matters which are before us for the hearing today, whether we had any ex parte communications, whether we have any ownership interest in the properties, whether we have any business dealings with proponents or opponents of the matters, or whether we have business associates or immediate family who may be either benefited or harmed by a decision in these matters. Are there any commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show that there were no declarations. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Seeing none, let the record show there were no objections. The order of the hearing shall be as follows. Planning staff shall provide a staff report. The commission may ask questions of staff. The applicant or applicant's representative presentation. In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, if any. Calling public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, if any. Email public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, if any, to be read into the record by staff. Final staff comments. Clarification of public statements that occurred during the testimony portion of the public hearing. Close the public hearing and planning commission discussion of the proposed action. Are there any procedural questions before we begin the public hearing? Seeing none, item one is a public hearing for file CUP 2022-10-SCPA 2022-29 is a proposal for the expansion of the City of Pasco's process water reuse facility, the PWRF. Expansion consists of three phases. This proposal is for phase two of the project, which is the provision of additional winter storage through the proposed lagoons on city-owned and reclamation-owned parcels and establishes a construction site for future pretreatment. I declare the public hearing for CUP 2022-10-CPA 2022-29, excuse me, 29 to be open at 6:42 PM. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Oh, it's got to be in the actual presentation mode?
Dang.
Okay, okay, we'll get her there. Come on. What the... Uh-huh, that's what I would like you to do, start. Oh, that's why. It's all in the background with no indicators. Okay. It's not showing up up here. We just got a new system like a month and a half ago. So I think this is our second meeting using this, first without IT, so...
Are you just trying to share your screen with your projector?
Yeah, so there's...
It should... What's his name always has a remote control thing he does, but they've changed everything. Our whole system's different now.
Oh.
For some reason, this always works when IT's here. Soon as they go, there's some glitch.
He just needs to walk back right in through the door. That'll work.
Usually, that seems to be the way it works.
No, because the way it's set up is that's the actual...
Do whatever you just did. That.
Nevermind, I saw that.
To present, visit 172304.21.
They could do something like that.
What I need is I just need this set up, so we can...
Yeah, just hit, go to that...
My IP address. I'm hardwired, I'm not wireless.
No, no, it's...
We're gonna have to take a break for a few minutes and get this figured out, so...
All right, can you go directly HD?
6:49.
We'll move to that if that's what asked.
All right, so, yeah, just declare the...
Oh, do it again.
So I declare a recess at 6:49 PM.
Due to technical difficulties.
Due to, yeah, difficulties with our computer setup. Now, check, is Alicia on the phone or anybody calling in?
That's, that's the thing too, is I'm not seeing anybody.
Did send bad information.
Yeah.
Well, she said you did. So I don't know what's going on there. All right. Thankfully, Maria's here. She should be able to answer questions if...
Back.
Yeah, it's on whatever...
So we're ready?
We're good to go?
Go ahead.
Okay, so recess is over and we're back to reviewing CUP 2022-10-SCPA 2022-29.
6:53.
6:53 PM.
Thank you, Chair. As mentioned, this is a conditional use permit for proposed expansion of the City of Pasco's Processed Water Reuse Facility. The applicant is the city. The agent is RH2 Engineering. The properties don't have a sign because right now there's nothing on them. And it's actually one parcel that's been split in half, but we'll, we'll see that in a minute. It's 113090058 is the parcel number. Zoning is agricultural production 20. Comp plan is agricultural. Approximate, the property size is approximately 164.68 acres. Located east of US Highway 395, north of East Foster Wells Road, and west of Blasdel Road. Allow for the expansion of the City of Pasco's Water Reuse Facility. There's a grand total of three phases. This is for Phase Two, which is the provision of additional winter storage through proposed lagoons on city-owned and reclamation-owned parcels, and establishes a construction site for future pretreatment. The area to be used is approximately 70 acres of the north half of the property with additional expansion of the south half at a future date. Site plan features location of six lagoon ponds located to the north and south of the existing facility, power and water supply lines, future process water pump station, and a 14-foot wide access road. Well, that's not the way this is supposed to be being displayed. But whatever, it works. See, all we're supposed to be seeing is this, not all of that. But I don't know why it's doing that. It's a translation issue. So this is, even though it looks like two parcels, it's actually one parcel. I could not explain to you why it's done this way or set up. And frankly, it doesn't really have any bearing on the, this, the, the current situation. Because it's all under single ownership. But, so this is pre-existing, and then this is where they want to put the ponds on these. These are site photos. Honor about December 15, 2022. Staff sent notices to technical agencies, property owners within one mile, Franklin County Graphic, and also in the La Vos... I think I pronounced that right. Spanish newspaper. Posted a pending land use action signed on the property on December 27, and made a SEPA optional determination of nonsignificance, optional DNS. What that is, is we have not established a final determination regarding this. We, and this actually more follows our, our process and the way that we do things normally anyways. So we haven't issued an actual determination. That will be done following this meeting based on any comments, concerns, or additional things that we need to, um, do. Based on the fact we didn't really get any comments, it's unlikely that there's gonna be much alteration to the proposed... So what you have before you is the mitigated determination of nonsignificance as we know it, prior to, you know, in case new information or something turns out to where we want to amend this. The difference is that we'll amend it here if there's gonna be any amendments. Because always remember as the planning commission, and when we're doing public hearings, you're doing two things. You're doing the SEPA determination and determining whether or not staff, you know, you agree with that determination. And/or the public has an opportunity. Then you also have the project, which is connected but separate. So, for example, the SEPA comment timeline normally runs two weeks. In this type of a scenario, it's more, it runs until the public hearing. Project comments regardless run up until and during the public hearing. So that's kind of the nuance. That's why it's called an optional, I mean, it's a different process than what we normally use. It was under SEPA Registry, filed under, in the SEPA Registry under number 202206121. Comments are approach permit is required for access, which is already, you know, they have a 14-foot proposed. Then any utility extensions, pretty standard public works comments. The Department of Ecology's comments were their standard kind of, "If you're doing this, then you gotta do that." That, that, that standard letter that we generally get. Proposal is Phase Two of a three-phase expansion of the, um, City of Pasco's Processed Water Reuse. Phase Three was approved through CUP 202208, and that was the, uh, the rec, the, what we just did, where they're capturing the gas and, and doing those things. This phase will provide additional winter storage to the PWRF through proposed lagoons on Bureau of Reclamation land located to the north and south of the current facility. What is going on here? Going to... Approximately 70 of the total 80 acres of the northern half of the property. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So the, the, the stuff to the south is not planned at this time to actually have lagoons. That's, that's at a future date. Staff recommends approval of the proposal based upon review of utility goals and policies contained within Franklin County Comprehensive Plan, along with review of the Franklin County Code, and believes that the project will be a net benefit due to the increased ability of the facility to meet various state environmental standards, and also to accommodate additional growth that is coming to this area, both commercial, especially with commercial, and some of the ag applications out there. The proposed use in the AP20 zoning district is in accordance with the goals, policies in county. I, I should hope so because it's already an existing facility there. And, um, the proposal will not adversely affect public infrastructure. In fact, it's gonna probably improve it. Proposal will be constructed, maintained, operated, be in harmony with the existing or intended character of the general vicinity. The location and height of the structure and site design will not discourage development of permanent uses, permitted uses on property in the general vicinity or impair the value thereof. Everything that's around there is pretty much farmland. There may, you know, as is with any large facility like this, there may be things that do potentially impact, but it's not gonna be really much different than any other large proposed facility out there. They will be conditioned, you know, with regard to lights and stuff like that, that they have to, they can't be shining, can't be doing that stadium-like thing into your window, you know, or anything like that. Everything's gotta be contained onsite, so, um... And that'll come out during final construction and development and engineering. Cooperation connection with the proposal will not be more objectionable. I've already just kind of covered that. You know, this is a right-to-farm area. There's already a lot of things that even if this were to produce some fumes or, or odors, there's a lot of farming activity that does the same. It's not different. It's just, it is different maybe, but it's, yeah. I don't see it, you know, and again, it's been there for a while. The proposal will not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare if located where proposed. So some of the recommended conditions of approval are for the facility to follow best management practices, minimize dust during construction. We're looking at an inadvertent... We're doing, we're calling for a inadvertent discovery protocol because actually the site has been pretty much studied. They, they went and did a very extensive one. However, they don't always catch anything, so, or they don't always catch everything. So should, but they have definitely, they have a letter from DAHP and other folks stating that they concur with what they've done. So all our condition is, is that, they've already done the study that we would normally require in this circumstance. It's already been done. So now they're at inadvertent. Shall require, comply with requirements and recommendations of Franklin County Public Works Department. On this type of facility, a lot of it's gonna be general from us and other, as is often the case, other agencies have the control that they, and, and will set through conditions and spec requirements that they'll need to be, um, that they'll need to meet. So, you know, there's other licensing agencies and things at the state level. That's their job to condition or determine whether this facility is operating the way it is supposed to be. And that's our recommended, um, motion. And I'm happy to answer questions. That said, please be advised, I will likely defer any technical questions to the applicant.
Thank you, Derek. Does any commissioner have any questions of staff? I just have one. You mentioned something about a, another review of the, the building, the structure. Is there, is that just standard, uh, uh, building inspection process? Or is that what happens on that?
Most likely, yeah. They would apply, any structure being...
Permit.
They would apply for a permit. And then, um, based on the specific structure and proposed use, will determine whether it's prescriptive. You know, like a storage building's just gonna be prescriptive. But a storage, so that part, but the machinery, or if there's machinery inside there, that's either gonna be designed by an engineer or, again, it's gonna be a kit that comes with, you know, installation instruction, specs, all that type of stuff. But then you also have agencies at the state and potentially even the federal that come in and make sure that this thing meets the requirements to do what they're saying that it should be doing. And that's, that's outside of us.
So those inspections aren't falling on the county building department to do?
Not the technical engineering stuff, no.
That's basically an engineered building, correct?
Most likely, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So what happens there is, is on certain items, this, the engineer is there and they sign off to say it was done. But again, it depends. It'll, it'll likely be a mix of all of that.
Okay, does the applicant or the applicant's representative wish to speak?
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Maria Serra. I am the Deputy Public Works Director for City of Pasco, and I am here in representation of City of Pasco and our application for Phase Two of PWRF expansion, the winter storage ponds. We appreciate the opportunity to provide a statement on, on this item. Our project is the second phase of three phases for the expansion of our facility, like your report states, and we are really focusing on that winter storage capacity. This facility is a facility located in Franklin County, owned and operated by City of Pasco, and it, it is really in support of our, um, ag community and our processors, food processors specifically. This facility serves six food processors located nearby, and it receives their wastewater, not sanitary wastewater, only the wastewater used in contact with vegetables or produce of any kind, on cooking and other things that are produced in these big facilities. Our facility takes that wastewater, we pretreat it, and then land apply in crops circles where, that are owned by the city, so that those crops can uptake the nutrients that are in that pretreated wastewater. And by the time that wastewater reaches the aquifer, is clean. This is a very effective way of treating wastewater and helping produce. That's why the, the facility is called a reuse facility. Not in the proper manner of Ecology's definition of reuse, but yes, it is a land application facility. With that said, the various phases of the project, the first phase is in construction, which is just water and power. Phase Two is the winter storage, which is needed because during the winter, this facility cannot land apply because crops are not in the fields. Therefore, there is no treatment happening in those fields. So during the winter, when we have processors still operating and producing, um, their products, right? We still receive flow, we pretreat it, and then we store it over the winter months. In the spring, we're able to land apply. So with the growth of our current processors and the announcement of new processors, choosing Franklin County as their, their place of choice for new facilities, we are faced with the need to expand our facility. And, and this is what this is about. We anticipate, of course, getting permits from Department of Ecology. We have a permit with them. They oversee our operation. And then they are also oversight agency for any improvements in that facility, any change in operation. The same is true when it comes to ponds for dam safety, who is our agency with oversight on the construction of those embankments. So all those processes will be happening as well as permitting through the county to ensure that we are advancing our project in the proper manner that meets all the requirements. And I think unless you have any questions, I'm trying to be brief and give you an overview. This meeting is part of our outreach required through the funding for this project, which is also state funding. And so I am available to provide any translation if it's needed for any of our listeners or participants online to address any of those questions. We have a requirement to meet environmental justice requirements and ensure that any questions or concerns... or concerns in this project are addressed through public comment.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
In-person public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project, if any? Calling public testimony for, against, or neutral regarding the project? Seeing none, email public testimony? None. The staff have, have any final comments?
Nope.
No final comments. Is there any declaration of public statements needed by anyone from the audience? Seeing none, the public testimony portion of the public hearing for CUP 2022-10 slash SEPA 2022-29 is closed. Is there any discussion among the planning commission prior to entertaining a motion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Nope, I went and turned it off, got ahead of myself. Hold on, I apologize. Oh, worked fine that time, huh? All right. I, I zipped through it, so that delay just made it look weird.
So the six adopted findings of fact and intended conditions of approval. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so, motion proposed by Commissioner Neiften and seconded by Commissioner Gutierrez. Is there any discussion? May we have a roll call, please?
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Layton Low?
Yes.
Stacy Neiften?
Yes.
Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Peter Harpster?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item number two. Item number two is a public hearing for file TC 2022-1-SEPA 2022-30 is a proposal to amend Title 16 subdivisions of the Franklin County Development Regulations. I declare the public hearing for TC 2022-1-SEPA 2022-30 to be open, and the time is 7:15 PM. May we have staff present the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you.
I was going to introduce her. This is Millie Ann with AHBL, our contract consulting planning agency. They've been working on this for quite a while.
A long time.
And they're also the, the primary on our shoreline master program that you'll be seeing bits and pieces of throughout the year. And I'll get into an announcement regarding that at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, so like Derek said, I'm Millie Ann Van Divender. I work for AHBL. I know that Nicole Stickney came to you at least once, if not twice, last year about the same subject matter. We were hired by the county in 2016, 2017 to work on your comprehensive plan, and whenever you work on a comprehensive plan, you also, because that's your long-range vision, your goals and values for your community, you want to implement those goals and values with your, with your development codes and your subdivision codes. And so as part of that process, we kept an eye on the subdivision codes, especially when we were working as your staff, your planning staff, for a little while, when there were some staffing challenges at the county. And we did some on-call work for several years, so we, we have not only worked on your comprehensive plan and know what your goals and values are, but we've worked with, like, very intimately with your subdivision code. So we've seen where it works and where it has issues. It has not been updated in a very long time, so that's another reason that we're, we're bringing this to you. So a lot of those, a lot of these updates are needed to ensure consistency across jurisdictions, to comply with certain GMA regulations, to, mostly to clean up the code and to modernize it, just bring it into this century, and then to increase usability also. So just to give like a brief history, this is all in your packet. Staff has been working on proposed updates for the last few years, but it was initially part of the update for the periodic update process to your comp plan. Agencies and stakeholders reviewed the draft language early last year and provided feedback, so that was Public Works Department and probably the county attorney, and lots of different agencies looked at it and gave feedback, and then we incorporated that into the proposal, proposed changes. You, the planning commission, received a preview of the working draft amendments and had two workshops last year, but I know the commission, I'm seeing a lot of new faces that I haven't seen before, so I know, so some of this might be new to you, or you might, we're hoping you've seen it at least once before. And then, so staff sent a draft version of the proposed amendments to Department of Commerce, that's a, just something, a box that you have to check and make sure they know that something's coming, some changes are coming. And then, so the process tonight is that we'll present this, this is not a quasi-judicial, so you can talk to people about this. And tonight, you could make a recommendation of approval, and if you do, that would be a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, and then it would go to them, they could hold, they will hold a public hearing on it, take any comment from the public, and then they'll make the final decision. So, the organization of Title 16, Title 16 has subdivisions, so it has preliminary plots, like a big subdivision that has more than 11 lots in it. It also has your short plot regulations, so anything that's less than, that's nine or less lots. It has regulations about boundary line adjustments, so basically anything that has to do with property boundaries, subdivisions, short plots, boundary line adjustments, those kinds of things, and your innovative short plot process. The, the process and the regulations for all of those items are contained within this chapter. So the proposal includes some regulatory changes, some process improvements, some clarifications, and expanded detail, and then my favorite, consistency in grammar. So the key changes, we've just tried to summarize it real quick here. The proposal includes a reduction in frontage requirements for residential lots. It includes a provision for individual wells. The short plot number has been clarified, and I'll get into that in a minute. And then, the proposal includes removing specific fees from the code and adopting a fee schedule instead. And that is beneficial to you and to the county and to your staff because staff can change a fee schedule and perhaps bring that to you for, or bring it to the Board of County Commissioners for approval versus if your fees are included in your code and something happens that the, the price needs to go up or down, it's much more arduous task to change it if the fees are included in the code versus being included in a fee schedule. Communities often adopt a new fee schedule once a year, if not more often, so it's, it's a little easier to get fees changed and updated when you need to. So to go back and in a little bit, dive a little bit deeper into those kind of four categories of summary that I've provided, so proposal is to reduce frontage requirements for residential lots, and so this would allow more compact development. And this is found in section, or in chapter 1616, which talks about blocks and lots. And we can go into more specifics later if you'd like. This does not do anything to your density requirements, so the, so the, the amount of density that's allowed in the subdivision remains the same, that's in the zoning code, determined by the zoning code and, and the comprehensive plan. This just allows the lot to have less actual street frontage, within reason. There's a proposal to add a chapter on individual wells that includes citing requirements. The Public Health Department was really involved in this, to help out with this one. So we've clarified the number of allowable lots that can be created, created in a short plot. So, in one section of the code, the definition of short subdivision says that it's, a short subdivision is for lots nine or fewer when you are within the UGA, and when you're outside the UGA, it's four or fewer, and that matches what your SEPA regulations say. And then in the short plot purpose area, there's no change, so we're not changing the definition, that was already there, we're not changing the short plot purpose statements. The only part that's changing that we're cleaning up is under the application section. So basically, two different, three different code sections, we're not agreeing, so we're proposing that you clean that up, so that your application section matches the other sections, and it's all clear to everybody that a short plot is nine or fewer lots. It's just a, it's a difference, everybody, does everybody know the difference between a preliminary plot subdivision and a short plot? Short plot is a smaller, it's a smaller division of land, so if you have a smaller piece of land and you're only going to nine lots, or eight lots, or seven lots, then that can be handled by staff, it's administrative, but if it's a full subdivision, if it's a preliminary plot, it's 10 lots, it's 15, it's 50, then that goes through more of a process, and it's a longer process because it's, it's more land involved, and I believe it goes before the planning commission, and then the county commissioners also see preliminary plots and final plots, probably.
And a subdivision, a larger SEPA process, SEPA review, short plots.
No SEPA review.
Yeah, there's more to it than that, but generally speaking, that's it. And then what I already said about the fee schedule, we're just proposing that we, you take that section out of your code and put it in a separate fee schedule, that's, that would be another step that staff would, or somebody would have to come up with a fee schedule after this. So your next steps are, after this public hearing concludes, you can make a recommendation tonight, you also have the option to hold another public hearing if some major questions come up tonight that we can't answer, or you want major changes or something, but you could make a recommendation tonight, and if you do that, then it would go to the B O C C, and then there would be an ordinance to adopt it, and it would be changed. There is, I didn't include it in the slideshow, but there is a motion, a sample motion in your staff report. It's about the, yeah, it's about- So, because it's legislative, I think maybe a little more informal, and I'm here, if you have questions or if you want to dive deeper, I can pull the code, the draft code up on the screen to you.
What's the biggest change on the well, on the wells, on the individual wells? What, did it added a chapter?
On the wells, you said it, it puts some, a chap, a whole chapter in there on individual wells, and that the Public Health Department was heavily involved in that. What did that, I was trying to find it in here, but didn't have it in the table of contents. What, what are the big changes on that?
So it's, provides provisions for individual single wells, talks about exempt wells, or exempt water, small amounts of water.
Okay.
It just sets out the rules and regulations for that.
We didn't have that before?
Correct.
Okay.
No, our answer was, our answer was always, go talk to the Health Department.
Right.
Or, or do a public utility, which is ecology. So now this actually, it, like she said, it's in coordination with them, so when we're articulating to the public what's going on, you know, and what the requirements are, we actually have that ability as opposed, you know, to articulate, well, now you're not going to be able to do X because your site doesn't meet based on these things, as opposed to sending them over to the Health Department and have the Health Department telling them that we can help.
So do they still have to go to the Health Department?
They will, they will, yeah. Because we're not the, the ones that approve the well or anything like that, all we're doing is providing some initial information, but we will not, we don't, we don't do wells, that's, that's ecology and the health district. But is that about?
Yes.
Was that initial information just, it wasn't quantifying volume of water or anything like that, just location of wells, right, for approval?
We didn't even speak to it, we said you shall have a water source.
Okay.
And even that, frankly, I'm not even sure if that was in our code. It may, see, some of our codes are missing what everybody assumes, because everybody knows you got to have water. I'm not saying that was or wasn't in there, but that's an example. Some obvious things are left out of our code because they're obvious, and unfortunately, our codes actually need to assume nothing is obvious, so this just helps clarify the situations. For example, half acre lot, you ain't doing a well. One acre and above, we start entertaining that idea, so. Because under Franklin County, health, or, under the Health District, that's their thing. One acre must be one, if you're doing well in septic, because though it is technically possible, you have to have a lot of caveats and control, so you could theory, depending on the way the lots laid out, actually fit septic and wells on a half acre lot, but you're going to have a very tiny house, because your septic system can't be too big, and you, you know, and this and that, and it's, so it's, in theory, it's possible, but it's very rare that a half acre lot will be able to accommodate both. I can't say it never will, Franklin County and the Health District, so I'm assuming this applies in Benton County as well, but I could be wrong. One acre minimums for a well, a, a private well, so.
So that puts it, we're looking at, with that description, then it's, it's mainly that county lots are one acre and more, and that the UGA is to the city side of it, at the half acre and less.
Mm-hmm. That's, that's part of why, out in the rural blocks, unless you have a public water system that's been approved by ecology, you can't build or create lots less than one acre.
We really didn't reinvent the wheel, we were just putting on paper what the Health Department requires anyway.
Correct.
Correct.
It's more, it's another source of information for the applicant in advance to help them make their decisions.
So we didn't make it more bureaucratic from the Building Department to go there?
You can, I, I found the section-
Not if I can avoid it.
And the first one is adoption of state rules. It's just, it's saying, these are the rules that we follow.
You didn't go above and beyond the state rules or make a special anything, okay?
No. Any other questions?
Curious what kind of outreach happened on your guys' end with the development community over the last year and a half or so.
Each of, there's been public notice, there was public notice about this. I don't know that there was specific outreach to developers. It's certainly been something that's been talked about for, over a year, if not longer.
It, this, this works, come up and down for the last three, four years, so all the, all the developers that know me should have made comment by now, because they all should have been by this point notified that this is going on, so.
Another one, BLA approval on-
Another one, BLA approval on page 39 of the staff report, going from 15 to 21 days, and from 21 to 45, there's federal interest, wondering the reasoning on that?
The reasoning is that it's extremely difficult for staff to turn around permits that quickly. The government, if the government is involved, if WashDOT is even involved, it adds a lot of time. They are consistently understaffed and overworked. So it just takes, you know, we might, we might ask them to give comments within two weeks, and I, I've had them give comments after the public hearing on projects. Not, not that a BLA would go to a public hearing, but it takes them a while. It adds time.
Because we still have that 10-day agency comment period on a BLA. We don't send it out for public notice, but we do have it there, and that's where issues can arise. With that, you know, you turn it in, and then we get it out the next day, which is not likely, because it's not the only thing we're looking at. But we'll review it over the day or so, get that done. We're already at day two, we've still got 12 days, or 10, you know, 10 days of review. Now we're at day 12, 13. Well, we gotta wait until those comments come back, and then we gotta do our final thing, and then, yeah, I mean, and if we adopt a timeline, we're, we're required to adhere to that. And this is a, 21 days is more realistic of a turnaround. It still doesn't mean that we won't have that target of 15 days, but, you know, again, holidays, things come up, timing, when it was dropped off in relation to other days, and just stuff like that, so figured a week, it's not even quite a week, it's six days, Our goal is always to get it off our desk as fast as possible, because there's more behind it, so.
And I suppose my WashDOT example was incorrect, because it says federal, 45 days for federal agencies. But the WashDOT example is a good reason to extend it to 21 days from 15.
It's, it's the core.
So if it goes past the 21 days, what happens?
Typically, we would contact if we know something's gonna happen, like if we know, you know, we're waiting on somebody's comment, and we know they're gonna comment, or we know somebody's been on vacation, or sick, or something, and we just haven't been able to get to it. We would typically call or email the applicant and say, we are obligated to return this to you within 21 days to make a decision. It's not gonna happen, we haven't had any staff. Would, would you grant an extension for five days, or whatever? Negotiate with the, not negotiate, but work it out with the applicant when we, when we can.
So it can still just, it can still turn into however long?
But that's not.
About getting back?
After, after that, only with the cooperation of the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, we, no, it's, we would notify them and let them know there's an issue, like, you know, we haven't heard from BLM. Well, luckily, with BLM, or, no, it's reclamation, that we skip it comments, and their comments almost always mirror them, so that one's not as bad, but, but the Bureau, or the BLM, or Army Corps of Engineers, good luck getting anything back from them in three weeks.
The reason I'm asking is, is if, if we tell the applicant it's gonna happen in this many days, and they start planning from that point forward, and the federal agencies take their time, that's not really the applicant's problem, so, or their fault. So I was wondering, does, does it hold up their whole process?
It can, yeah. Because by law, I have to wait until those federal agencies respond, because the feds trump everything, so they get to do, I mean, they have their rules, and, but who, you know, I can't make them do what they're supposed to do. They have staffing issues.
So you can't force them, you can't force them to come in in 45 days? You know what I mean?
No, at 45 days, we, we're like, look, man, we gave you plenty of time, you ain't done it, we're just moving on.
Okay, all right, that's.
But recognizing the federal monster that it is, that's the deal with comments. When you get noticed, and you refer, or provide an opportunity to comment, you have a right to comment during that period. If you do not provide comments, you can't, sorry. That's your obligation as an agency to be doing your job. We recognize the feds, though. It ain't just us, it ain't just the state, it's the whole country, maybe even other things, you know, going, I know it's regionalized and this and that, and it's mite it up, but the point is, is the federal process is the federal process, and we have no control over it. We can't, we can't do anything, so we're beholden to it. But there's a certain point where you just gotta move on.
Yeah.
And, and that's it, 45 days.
Okay.
Because it is not uncommon for them to comment within 30.
But it's nature of the review process, what you're saying, is very definitive. And we're looking at a 45-day block here, and like you say, you could, if they don't respond, then.
Yeah, they should be able to do it within 15 days, or 20 days, you know, something like that, but.
Yeah.
But yeah, at, at that, it's like, eh, we're done.
I just didn't want to put some meaningless days up there.
And, and not everybody, it's only the feds, it's not the state. It's only the federal situations. So in our locality, generally speaking, it's Army Corps of Engineers, Bureau of Act, and, Bureau of Act, BLM, there's a lot of that, too, where people are utilizing federal lands, so. And then we got DNR and some other things, but DNR doesn't tend to come into our purview, except for as a commenter, or a proximity. Sorry. I'm gonna stop talking now.
I got a question. I know you briefly talked about fee schedule, or schedules previously. Is there a big change in this title versus what was scheduled before on fees accordance, in accordance to the adaptation by resolution or in ordinance?
You mean, are we proposing to change the fees?
Correct.
We won't do that until we produce the actual fee schedule. And what, I don't even mean that. The first fee schedule, no, we're not gonna be changing nothing. We just, because we gotta comb all our codes, pull all of those out. I'm not just gonna do it for subdivisions. I have to do it for everything under our purview. We'll put that together. We'll also be looking at analysis for proposals of potential fee changes or whatnot, but not initially. It's like, a little bit at a time. For me to come in, pull all our fees out of the codes, then go, and we're gonna raise it, and this, and it's just a little bit, it's, in my opinion, cleaner to one, one element, one item, one concept at a time. So pull it all out, because that right there is gonna be substantial. We've got zoning code, building code, various places all over the place that we would need to remove it. Building code won't matter, because it's not a, that's a different code type. But right now, if I wanna, you know, charge a dollar, change it, I have to send it to Commerce, and a whole bunch of other people, and then they get an opportunity to provide comment on my fees, and it's not really appropriate for them to be timed to tell the county whether they should, or could, or whatever regarding their fees. That's the county's business, it's the fiscal item. So you put it in the fee resolution, and take it out of the code, and it's a resolution that's been adopted by the county. It's usually reviewed, as she mentioned, annually or biannually. And then it's all in one place, instead of having to go, well, how much is it here? And how much is it there? Now, we already have a fee list, so that's gonna make a lot of it, but I have to go into the codes and actually repeal it, or modify each of those codes, pulling that out. This, because we're pulling it out now, we'll take care of the subdivision section, because it's already, the version that was sent to Commerce doesn't have the fees in it. So, you know, that's, but that, but at this point in time, we're not planning on, what we will do is a cost analysis, to determine what it costs the city, or the county to process them. And frankly, even then, we won't probably be charging what it costs. The, you know, our code, our fees are from like the early 2000s, you know, $150 for a SEPA checklist, 300 to 450 is more the standard price statewide. I'm not saying that there aren't places.
Is that the jump that it's gonna make on these?
When you do something like that, you need to do it progressively. So that may become the end goal, but maybe, my recommendation would be that it's phased over a period of years, or something along that line, you know? So you do it, but to go a 300% increase in fees, because that's what it costs you, that's not fair to the public. They don't have the ability to react to that. So it's, it's, you, in my opinion, it's done progressively. That will be up to the board, though. They will be provided with all of that.
But is it also fair to the public to be charging the early 2000s, right, and have a 300% jump per item right now, than having that progressively done per item? So, let me rephrase that. It, it doesn't sound like it makes any sense to make that big jump if it should have already happened time ago. Does that make sense?
Why are we still charging 2,000 prices in 2023?
Exactly, yeah, so why are we?
I've only been here for, the amount of time I've been here, and I've been trying to do things, there's, and this is on that list. So if I don't do it today, when am I gonna do it? You know, so I can't speak to why nobody did anything before I got here. And why I haven't done it since I got here is because there are other things tied into it that needed to be in place first, namely the comp plan, because that establishes the overall pattern that I'm working off of. This year, we're gonna start getting pretty heavy into the zoning code. Well, that's a 200-plus-page document. I got, we've gone through it a few times, and I still have some final things that I just need to make a decision on, as far as my recommendation goes. But, you know, going through that, and then we gotta go through, again, multiple public hearings, comment periods, let people, because it needs to be a working document. Our zoning code is currently designed under a different paradigm than exists today. It was, all of our codes were written for a rural community, because that's what we were. Then all of a sudden, we started developing some suburbia. And, but our codes don't understand the urban-rural interface, and that's one area where we're missing things, and those things need to be updated. And just the whole current paradigm. Our codes were designed around a community that basically grew at, if they were doing good, 1%. Now we're the, I heard yesterday, the seventh fastest-growing county in the nation, one of the top in the coun, in the state, if we're not the top, it depends, you have to see different things, they say different areas. Sometimes it's us, sometimes it's over on, like Bellevue, or something like that, but, so.
They're slowing that down with a year to get a building permit.
Well, that's, that's, yeah, and now that's the other thing, you know, people don't like my timelines, and we do pretty good, in my opinion, three to four weeks. Over there, it's two years.
If you go anywhere else, it's, it's substantially longer. But are codes location-specific? I mean, are they relative to, I mean, when you talk about fee structure, would you compare that to Seattle, or something, or statewide, or?
No, I, I do a, I do an internal analysis. Now, where I would compare it to would be Benton County, probably Walla Walla County, maybe Adams, you know, the surrounding jurisdictions, so that you maintain, you maintain relative consistency. And then that's compared against, what does it actually cost us to do it? And then we, we break that down. But I think we're getting a little off-topic, because the, the purpose of this is the subdivision.
Is to say there's a fee schedule?
But there will be a fee schedule coming.
For another day, right?
And it just makes it, it actually makes everything easier for everyone, because they can just look and go, that's what it's gonna cost to do everything. And if we need to change something, we can just go board, we need, we recommend a change, instead of going out for 120 to 180 days to change something, because of the required, I have to do a SEPA checklist, I have to do everything, because I'm modifying a development code. And in Washington State, if you modify your development code, you've gotta follow this same exact process as if you were completely rewriting it, so.
So, and, and just to close off this topic, will we, as a commission, be able to see what that fee schedule looks like before finer approval?
You will be able to see it, but you may, may not be able to have any recommendation powers, because this is a fiscal matter, and it's up to the board, just like you don't have any say on whether the assessor changes his tax paradigms. It's the same thing. This is, this is about the budgeting for the county. That said, you will, you will see it, I just don't, you know, or we may even ask your opinion, but it, it's not like these types of recommendations, because that, that's really not in your purview. Finances of the county are not under the Planning Commission. This is land use, not costs.
Was there any discussion over cul-de-sacs and knuckles, and standards for cul-de-sacs applying to knuckles, or defining knuckles?
Not to my knowledge. I don't think that we adjusted any of what's in there right now.
Okay, yeah, I didn't.
That's gonna be more, I would say, probably a public works design, road, a road design. When you say knuckle, you're talking about the corners that look kinda like a cul-de-sac, but, but aren't actually like a cul-de-sac, yeah. Yeah, that, that would be more of a public works purview, not ours. That's street design.
Yeah, we're.
Or are you talking about for the frontage?
For the frontage, yeah. Same requirements for cul-de-sac lots applying to knuckles. The reason I ask is, we're doing that with the City of Pasco right now, doing a text to change that, expecting a number of subdivisions. They've allowed it for several years, and then kind of made, took a hard line this year, and said, it's no longer allowed, we're gonna follow the letter of the law, the definition of cul-de-sac, which is the same in here, and the road closed that one. So we talked about various options, change the definition of cul-de-sac, and city staff and ourselves looked at several different jurisdictions throughout the country, to try to find a definition that would work, that would allow knuckles to be considered, you know, as a cul-de-sac, but still keep the cul-de-sac definition.
How'd that search go? Still searching? Yeah.
No, they didn't change here.
Yeah, we're not proposing any changes in ours.
Yeah, I see there's been changes, just wondered if there was discussion.
I don't, probably not. We don't, I mean, knuckles, courts, straight runs, all of that's really, that started getting into design, and, and our code, we're not as design-focused, shall we say, as the city is, and appropriately so. Cities get very into, hell, heck, a lot of them have design departments, it's all they do. And you have to go to the Design Review Board and various other things. Franklin County just doesn't go there, and I don't know that they would want to. So it's pretty much always gonna be on a case-by-case, based on the proposal of the developer, unless something significantly changes.
A question, I think we reviewed that, they just talked about the frontage, decrease the frontage, the linear footage of the frontage is one of the things.
Yeah.
That we talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that's on the radius cul-de-sac, pie-shaped lots, being able to fit, is that what that's all about?
Yeah, so the code used to say, it only specified lots with less than 25,000 square feet, had to have 90 feet of street frontage. And if it was a cul-de-sac, it was 35 feet. So 35 feet is staying, but the 90 feet got reduced. And then we broke it down, so that there's lots less than 12,000. We added a new provision for that, for smaller lots, because you do have those in the county, or you're allowed to have those. And then 12 to 25, just put in more parameters and more widths for that? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
So yes, if you're on a cul-de-sac, you don't have, to have as much street frontage, because it doesn't make sense geometrically.
That knuckle, you know, now you got me thinking about that whole knuckle question.
And what's the advantage on that knuckle deal?
It's an advantage to the developer, because it allows them to pop more lots.
Right.
In a corner.
In a corner, instead of like ending up with a just a wedge, sometimes if it's done laid out right, you can pick up maybe three instead of just one. Because you're able to flare out that corner and then they attach to those, that flare out.
We're just, but you could just.
And it pushes them back a little bit.
Right.
Um, so it may open up. It's just, it's, it's very situational as to where, whether you're going to get any benefit from it. It's, but there are occasions and and it is something that I guess we would need to think about because of that, though not always. You know, there's a lot of times where it won't, you just, it's just, it's not going to make any sense to put it in. But there are occasions where the developer can get a couple more lots per corner. So, you know, and then especially when you start getting into your smaller lots. Um, your higher density lots, um, you're going to get this more. Like on a one acre subdivision, I don't know that you'd get anything from that because it would flare out in the one acre lot. I mean, you might get two where maybe before you got one, but then just kind of tweak in a little bit, you can pull that same effect. So. But on the little lots, ten thousand, twelve thousand square foot lots, that's where you're real, or or smaller, you're going to, that's where those things start becoming more. You know, again, you can pop a few more lots out because of that bump back.
And that's why I bring it up, is to your point you said a few minutes, because the tremendous growth we're experiencing. All that we have now is written several years ago, doesn't account for that. So we're going to be seeing close to city level development in the county. So we should be considering that to be more efficient with the land that we are developing. We can't just develop everything, it's with the land that you can develop, you want to.
And we need to, you know, one of the things we're going to be looking at is you know, with, and this will apply more in our zoning, but, um, if full public, you know, sewer and water basically are available. So you're on city water, city sewer. Then shouldn't you be able to build to an urban standard? Even if it isn't in our donut hole or in our, and then in the UGA, the UGA is actually supposed to be. Now granted, significant amounts of that, that that is for the city. And that whole area should be actually laid out in design as far as your allowances for lots as desired by the city. Because UGA by definition means eventually going to be part of the city. Um, so you don't want to, in the UGA necessarily allow large lot development because that's not, that's not really feasible for an urban jurisdiction. And we have a lot of that already and it's, it's, it's part of why I haven't gotten to some of these things is trying to figure out solutions to some of the existing issues that we have. And then how we go about implementing them. Um, and and making sure you don't create situations, you know, looks good here. But then you you start playing it out and rippling it out and you realize, ooh, that's going to create this weird thing over here, or oh, that's really going to score. Sometimes that's just going to happen, but we try to minimize that in our review of the codes. Because like, like, you know, again, the knuckles and cul-de-sacs are really more, when you start getting into the really large lots, it becomes less relevant because of the size of the properties and things. But when you start getting smaller and and then it becomes much more relevant. Because they can get a lot more grid patterns, um, all sorts of those things. There's pluses and minuses for all types. I'm of the school of thought that you let the land determine which is the best approach, but that's me.
Well, yeah, just, you don't change the size of a lot just because you changed the efficiency of the cul-de-sac and the radius and the linear footage of the of the frontage, just makes it more attractive, but you still had to set the house on a one acre lot, for instance.
And another thing, like with sheds and and storage buildings and things like that, you know, or whatever your design standards. If ninety percent of your applications are asking for something and your code's not providing that, then that's an indication that maybe you need to review your code. And that's, that's really kind of where we're at. Spend a lot of time trying to figure out how to get people where they need to go based on what's existing. We update the codes, it's all laid out, it becomes much easier. Because it's, it becomes, the more things are prescriptive, the easier it is for everyone because everybody knows what the rules are. And our code is hit and miss with that because like I said, the things that were assumed are often not there. And our codes can't assume that, you're going to know. So we have to articulate it. And that's a lot of what this work is, is just frankly, clarifying some, yeah, there's some material changes like this, but mostly it was bringing it up to legal requirements. And, um, and just getting information in there that that should have been there all along. And as far as delay goes, you know, we have the comp plan, then the comp plan goes back and forth, and then this and that, and these notes, and then I, and this, and, oh, yay, uh, wolves and this. So, okay. Any other questions? I mean, if you're comfortable, you can make a recommendation, if you'd rather, because this is the thing, it must be unanimous. Your recommendation, this is one of the categories that requires five, is that right? No, it requires four. Super majority situation, that's what I'm trying to remember what my counts are. If you only have four, yeah, it has to be a majority of this board, not the, those intending, that's what it is. So it doesn't have to be unanimous because we have five. But you can vote, you can put it off, it's up to you. Um, it just, we just need to know what direction to go in. Um, whether you want to look at this again or whether, uh, you want us to get, excuse me, prepped, start taking it to the board. Because the board, as you mentioned, this is, you know, these will be open hearings before the board. It's not a closed hearing situation because it's not quasi judicial, it's legislative. The board is making a decision on our laws and how our world will will develop. So they could choose to have multiple public hearings as well. Um, but it's a matter of, are you comfortable with where it's at and what you're seeing? To make a recommendation, or do you want to postpone? If you want to postpone, you just indicate that you want to postpone.
My biggest question would be is not, I mean, I think I'm comfortable with the changes here, but is the public, have we given the public enough time to see what the changes? I know, but this hasn't been finalized for three years, you've been working on it for three years.
But this is the version that's pretty much been floating for three years. There's been minor tweaks, then other things came in and got in front of it, so that got set aside. So, that said, they were notified about tonight. But also, if that's your concern, that's exactly the type of reasoning why, you know, hey, maybe we need not to make a recommendation at this meeting. But we will have to make a recommendation at some point, we are going to have to draw a line.
Well, the thing is, is, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, we need to close the public hearing and then have this discussion.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so.
Yes, we are, see, this, this is what's also, I mean, we're allowed to have discussion during the hearing.
Well, this is more of a staff report thing, so.
It's, it's just morphed into.
So the, the, to figure out what you were saying, the, like I said, the city of Pasco is going through a very similar process right now. Their changes are eighty nine pages. And they have intentionally reached out to the development community multiple times, we've had multiple meetings with them on this exact stuff to get it nailed down. This is seventy six pages and there's been no direct outreach. So I understand for three years.
There's been no direct outreach today because we've talked to the docs. Yeah. Wow, we just crashed.
Yeah, everything just kind of.
Find us suspicious, that happened right at eight o'clock, too.
But.
That sounds like a computer. But certain developers actually have been consulted on multiple occasions, it's just it was a couple of years ago.
I think, yeah, a couple, and this has been changed, you said there's just a few changes, that's fine. But I think what would be helpful is an invite specific to the development community with HBO staff to do one final kind of look through here. Especially with all of the. Especially like this cul-de-sac knuckle stuff that's coming up in the city will be coming up in the county at some point, might as well take care of it now.
I just think that the development community can pay attention to public notices just as much as people can. I mean, I'm not saying that they should be negated or anything, but there were two workshops last year, and if anybody's interested in this, I, I went through the, I watched the YouTube videos so that I could write this staff report and so that I would be up to speed on everything. Anybody can watch those videos and catch up and make comments. And Derek and his staff can take comments on this at any point, it's legislative. I think there's been a lot of time, I think, something else to keep in mind, it has taken a lot of time to get this to this point. But that's not to say you can't, you can't change it again later. You could revisit this in a year or in two years, please.
Doesn't matter.
No, I mean, you could revisit this a year, in a year, you could get these changes set in place. And then go back and make these other tweaks that you're considering.
But that's a decision, you know, you don't need to discuss that with me, you need to discuss that with these guys or folks to make sure, and you guys need to come to the decision, do you want to do a motion or do you want to put this off? And, you know, ask staff to do various things, I mean, that's, but that's as a body, just like with the commissioners, the board of county commissioners. One commission cannot direct, it takes at least two. It's kind of the situation here, you guys as a group, nobody, you know, you guys as a group, I don't control this. You don't need to convince me, I'm here just to do whatever you want. I'm just trying to explain that you have these options and then you guys need to figure out what approach you want to take. And and just let me know so I know what my next steps are.
So if we, if we decide to put this off, can we, when does it come up again? Does it come up in the next meeting?
I would schedule it for the next meeting.
Okay, so you mentioned before, is because this isn't necessarily a, is this something that us as commissioners can talk to people outside this?
Yes, this is legislative.
Quasi judicial, right?
It's not quasi judicial.
Guys have been told that at each of these workshops.
I know, but I just want to make sure because, because what I, and I agree with you, I mean, they can watch the public notices and stuff like that, but they have, I mean, I see what, we, we hear what's going on with the city of Pasco right now. I mean, there's, there's both sides of the fence and they're making some pretty major changes that are changing the way developers look at property and it might not necessarily be good for some and bad for others.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, I don't know about you guys, but I'd, I would like to put it off one more meeting, just so we can actually give, I mean, I, I know a lot of developers around town, I'm sure you do too, to just say, hey, this is what we're doing, you guys feel like you guys have had enough time to look at this, or do you guys have any more comment? Not that I want to throw a wrench in the middle of everything or anything else like that, but this is, I think, part of our responsibility to make sure that the public has their time. We've had two workshops, that's fine, but two workshops over three years.
I agree, I think.
Well, there were two workshops last year, not, not two over the course of three years.
But still, it's.
But I understand what you're saying, I just want to clarify that.
The development community is probably a little bit more engaged in this type of stuff today than it was a year ago. Because of the changes going on with, with Pasco.
And I'd like with just one month, continue it to next month, Nicole stating last time she was here was in April. I don't know what happened in the last eight months, but certainly don't want to wait that long.
There was a second workshop in June.
Yeah, so that, and that's my, and that's my thing is coming to meetings is, we went a long time without hearing anything. And I understand there was work being done behind the scenes and everything else like that, but I don't know about the rest of the commission, but I.
Don't look at me, you guys need to have your conversation, have your discussion, you just tell me what it is once you're done with your discussion.
Yeah, we would just need.
For all the exact same reasons, we should continue one month.
That, that would be, what do you guys think?
Well, should we just follow the format of the meeting then? And if staff doesn't have any further comments, we'll close public testimony and, and figure this out, right?
Yes, you would make a motion to delay to a date certain, if you don't want to notice it again or to the next meeting, and then staff could do a new public notice to let the public know again. And then if you have any direction, like Derek's saying, if you have any direction for things that you want changed, it doesn't sound like you do, but if there is something that you want changed or you want some more study done, then we could work on that in the next week or two.
So one question that I have is, uh, you talk, we were talking about, uh, the builder community being more involved and being able to maybe potentially be present, are we going to do another workshop before to give them the opportunity to be able to make some comments on this?
I, I, what I would recommend is we continue it to next month and in the next thirty days between now and the February eighth meeting that we have, make sure that they are aware of this, um, either staff does that or us ourselves.
Or just word of mouth.
People we know, yeah, forward it out. And then, um, what I think would be helpful is in between now and the next meeting, have a meeting, uh, with HBO and the county and um, if even needed, once everybody's had a chance to take a final look at this.
And then if there is more public hearings that need done, leave it to the county commissioners before they vote on it. If they want to have some more public hearings, then that's fine, but.
You wouldn't necessarily need to have another meeting, the public hearing would be the opportunity for anyone to come and make comment.
Right.
Yeah, I was just saying, before we get to that, to try to get a, a, a forwarding to the board at that meeting, maybe we have a meeting prior. So then it's not, you know, in February, we have this, now let's move it to March and continue what we've been doing.
I just think it's better to have, if you're going to involve groups, to open it to the public. So that it's not just.
So a workshop, once a year?
A, a public hearing, in this case, because it's legislative, it could be another, it can be a continuation of this public hearing. Or a second public hearing.
And that's, public hearings are fine, but I mean, when it comes to the development part of this, I think the development community is, the guys are going to be dealing with this more than anything else. I would, I, my recommendation to, to you guys, just put it off for thirty days, let.
Yes, I'm in the same, this is out of my wheelhouse, this, so I'm going to take Peter's recommendation. I want to, yeah, I want one another monthly.
Are we ready to entertain a motion on this now?
Or do we just tell you?
You have to make a motion.
You have to make a motion.
Say, have we closed the public hearing?
If, okay, so if you're going to make a recommendation, close the public hearing, because that closes our record.
Mm-hmm.
If you're going to postpone, then you, you keep saying it and I keep forgetting the word.
Make a recommendation to continue.
Continue the public hearing.
Public hearing to a date certain.
And and that will be to the next scheduled planning commission meeting, which is the first Tuesday of the month.
February eighth.
February eighth. That's the first Tuesday, oh, it must be, okay, it's one of them, okay. The first is on a Wednesday, huh?
Okay, so right now, we just need to close the public hearing part.
February seventh?
No.
Oh, no, because not on this subject.
You, you have to first decide as, you have to take a vote, postpone or or what? Do you want to close, you know, get that done? What are you doing? Are you going to make a recommendation or are you going to postpone?
Postpone is what I would think is, is everybody agrees with that.
The chair needs to ask that question.
Okay, so in lack of any public testimony, I mean, I'm going to declare that the, uh, uh, that the public testimony portion of the public hearing for TC twenty two?
Nope.
No?
Nope, it's not on here.
It's not on here, okay.
So this is, what you're going to ask for is
Continuance?
I'll entertain a motion to, um, continue this public hearing.
Continue this public hearing.
Okay. Okay, so at this point, uh, I would entertain a motion to continue, uh, this public hearing at a later time.
I make a motion to continue the public hearing for file TC two zero two two dash zero one slash CEPA two zero two two dash thirty to the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on February eighth.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so a motion by.
It would be the seventh.
Huh?
Be the seventh.
It's the first Tuesday of the month of February, what date is that, the seventh?
February seventh.
February seventh, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so a motion made by Commissioner Harvester and seconded by Commissioner Low.
Vote.
We will entertain a, a roll call vote.
Yep.
Mike Vincent?
Yes.
Laden Low?
Yes.
Stacy Neiften? Manny Gutierrez?
Yes.
Peter Harpster?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion has been approved to delay till the next planning commission meeting.
Continue the hearing.
Uh, continue the hearing.
Continue the hearing, so, then I will declare that the, uh, this meeting is adjourned at eight, no?
Just real quick, okay, we don't have anybody in the mem, um, we don't have a member of the audience who would wanna comment in person. Is there anybody online? Okay, um, what, and now my, yep, um, so, wanted to let you know, um, six D goes to the commissioners to next, on Tuesday, um, so a week from today. I had some other ones. Um, they did approve the the reclamation facility or whatever that is, the, the gas capture biogas facility. Um, and then we'll, we've got some other ones that we're still cleaning up that will be taking over the next couple of weeks too. Um, but, um, and then we're looking at doing some modifications of the building code. Not under your purview, but, um, I think the community's gonna like it because if we're gonna get some, a little bit flexibility on a couple of items. Um, and, uh, and then, um, that was it. Oh, yeah, that window will be opening. We're gonna be taking the docket to the board, cause it turns out we take it directly to the board. I, and I apologize, I didn't know that. I've never seen that you don't vet it with the planning commission.
Establishing the docket, right?
So, they're just establishing, but then the items for actual approval and action, those do come. It's just the docket establishment. Um, but on January twenty-fourth, from six to eight PM, um, we will be over at Osprey Point doing a public open house for the Shoreline Master Program update that's triggered by the comp plan update. We're in process with that, uh, AHBLO and, and we'll get, we're already starting to notify everybody that was on a comp plan list. Those all got notified of it, uh, yesterday? Yeah, I think it was yesterday. And, and, um, so, and that's a, I call them dog and pony shows, you know, it's like, it's an opportunity for the public to show up, ask us questions, um, and, and we'll be there for two hours over at the Osprey Point, Port of Pasco. So that's on a corner of three ninety-seven and, um, Ainsworth, um, beautiful facility, um, so, just a heads up on that.
The, when is the board establishing the docket for the comp plan memo applications?
I'm hoping to get that to them, um, in the next couple of weeks. They've, they've got, done some changes to the process that was announced yesterday. So now, instead of a week in advance, it's nine days in advance or seven working days. So I've gotta check on my scheduling and figure things out and where things are, so. And that's it for me.
Okay, every, without further ado, I'll declare the planning commission meeting is adjourned at eight fifteen PM.